Does anybody else have? The, and then L three five, which is about the branding strategy. I know that you guys did that exercise last year. I don't know if-
That's a multi-year thing we're work- we're still working on. We actually have signs going in this year. We're replacing some additional signage and hopefully some wayfinding as well. I know the wayfinding was mentioned. I'm not sure if in this specific section, but yes, that's, we're active in that. That's a, I think initially we had a three-year plan. We've expanded to four or five years just because of, well, once again, we've, we've lost a staff member that was, you know, vital to that. And so, we're, we're working that into a couple other duties.
Yeah, I mean, if there's, if there's any updated language there, that's all I can say. An L four, protect the natural resources. Where, we had some discussion about this previously where it says, continue to protect the green belt. And I just thought we could say, protect the green belt, but we need to define what exactly the green belt is. And then just again, reference the U D O.
The green belt's basically the conservation zone, isn't it?
We don't really, we don't really have a conservation-
What do we call, what's the zone along the river? I thought that was-
Well, the river, but above Mary Ingalls, we don't, it's all, that's still all residential.
Yeah, I mean, that's all re- it's, I mean, it's one A or one AA, more, more rural residential, I guess you would say, but it's, it is not, you know, a conservation zone per se. But I think that would be what is implied by the green belt.
That's what I was thinking. So, we got that whole hillside. Well, the hillside's, we got development controls on the hillside, so we are protecting-
We're not restricting development, though.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, I think the whole green belt discussion is probably something that bears more discussion during the comp plan update, but at least in terms of the goals, I would just say protect. You know, or you could just say vegetated, forested slopes, or something like that, instead of saying, "The" green belt. And then, that second sentence there where you just had about work closely with the Fort Thomas Forest Conservancy, I just, I just added, "Or private property owners," because property owners can do what they want. And then I just changed that last sentence in L one, or L four one three from roadway to infrastructure, because it's not just roadways. Anything else on that? And L four three, I just took, again, remove the, "Ensure that." And then that first thing, that first sentence under L four three one, where it just says, "Need for additional engineering site design standards for stormwater vegetation clearance, blah, blah, blah." I just referenced the U D O again, or the subdivision reg port of it. The second sentence there about develop educational materials is, I don't have a problem with it, but again, that's not really the, it's not the planning commission's purview, anyway. And then the last one is really where it said, it talks about doing special economic development programs utilizing tax abatement incentives. That's something from council. That's not really, and I don't know what their position is on that.
Yeah, I'm not sure the language on that, if they want to tweak that language, tax abatement versus generically other incentives in some way, similar to like, you know, the grants or whatnot.
Does anybody else have any? Under L, or I'm sorry, T one two, I just changed the, where it says, "Provide highly visible pedestrian access to all schools and parks." I just changed it to, "Schools and community facilities," just like, you know, the city building, the armory, the track, you know, whatever. Yeah.
For everything.
For everything.
Right.
And then the section below there talks about the James Avenue connection and Highland Avenue, and I, as I recall, that was pretty contentious amongst the residents there and amongst the swim club and residents on Highland Avenue, so I thought that it would be best just to leave that out.
Well, I think that's pretty much scrapped with the, the improvements that we've made-
Right.
Looking at the pickleball courts and our continued improvements and other aspects have kind of almost pushed that-
The need for that, right.
And I, you know, the, the idea, just so you know, this, you know, one thing that we are trying to do is separate some amenities to try and create not traffic, too much traffic on one versus the other. So, we obviously have pickleball on one side. We're actually going to modify the discourse to start down by the pickleball courts instead of at the top. And, you know, surprisingly, I don't know if you've been to Highland Hills, but there is a lot of, a lot of disc golfers that are over there. So, you know, the idea is to separate those amenities to have the least impact on either.
Yeah. Anyway, I always just take out the reference to the, the James Court modification.
Yeah, I agree.
Yep. They're not as passionate as pickleball people, but they're passionate.
I'll tell you, they put their money where, they're not, not their money where their mouth is, but they've been out there clearing Honeysuckle for their course. They are, they're workers. I, I give them kudos, the discourse people.
Under the L, or I'm sorry, the T one three, where it says, "Develop a crosswalk safety plan." I didn't know, at least in the federal transportation world, it's usually called safe routes to school plan, not a crosswalk safety plan, but it's not that critical. And then that, that last sentence there where it says, "Restripe all crosswalk markings that have faded." I just put, "Maintain all pavement markings and signage." Make sense? It's more generalized. And then under T two two, I just, I'm fine with it, but I just didn't know if we needed to have a bullet list of all those intersections listed and just-
I, I would tend to agree. I, I wouldn't have a problem taking those out. You know, I think we're initially focusing on some of the areas we feel that, that need it, and then, you know, I think that's more of interdepartmental discussions and where those signs can go. So, instead of, I, I wouldn't have a problem with the removal of that.
I don't know if we need a provision here that says, "Work with K Y T C on some of their signage as well in the community," because some of the signage that's maintained more by the state doesn't look like it's in really great shape. I, I think they just put up some new signs, I noticed on the way in to work, from work today, in between Newport and our city limits, but there's some signs that need to be replaced or faded and hard to read.
I think we can certainly add that to, trying to think which section where the, the language-
T two point two.
There you go.
Under the T two three four, it says, "Repair the I two seventy-five bridge." I wasn't a hundred percent sure what that was.
Yeah, I'm not sure, I'm not sure-
It's not our responsibility to repair the highway department's bridge, but I wasn't exactly sure what that was getting at.
Yeah, I'm not sure on that one either. I, I saw that and there was a big, hmm.
I do remember at one point, and I don't remember when it was, but there was discussion about just trying to maybe replace the vandal protection fencing on there, because it was getting all rusted and kind of crappy.
Okay.
But I think they did, or did they not do that one?
You know, I can't even say-
I can't remember.
I can't even say on that one.
In any case, that, that's the only thing I can recall. There was some discussion, it may be during the 2018 discussions, there was, I think that topic came up, like, tell the highway department to paint their fence or replace it, but maybe that's what that was in reference to. I don't know. And then there also the thing about developing a multi-use path network from N K U to Newport. I don't necessarily disagree with that as a goal, but I don't know that that's something that the city's-
Well, I, I don't know that it was necessarily a multi-use path, but I know that there was a group, including Newport, N K U, Highland Heights, South Gate, Fort Thomas, that were getting together about that corridor and what kind of improvements collectively they could potentially consider along that entire corridor-
Right.
-that, that could benefit each other in some way. So, that's the only thing that I can think of as far as, maybe not necessarily multi-use path, but more along the lines of-
Maybe modify the language along those lines to implement corridor improvements or something like that, or coordinate with adjacent jurisdictions. I, I just wasn't sure about the, the multi-use path.
Yeah, I, I think it was more coordinating improvements and I'm not sure, I, it feels like that group kind of stalled a little bit. I know they were getting together for a while, and I don't know that there's been a lot of progression on it, but I, I wouldn't take it out of the, uh, take it off the table.
I think it's probably in there because there's maybe a chance they want O K I funding or something through Tri-State Trails would be my guess.
I'll say Tri-State Trails is very active right now. They're, they're trying to make improvements throughout the region. We've been having some meetings with them.
Yeah. And then under T three, there's this whole discussion how we provide sidewalks in some streets but not others, and there's gap. It, it seems like it's pretty wordy for a goal. I mean, I don't necessarily disagree with it, but I don't, I don't know that we need that kind of introductory paragraph in there.
Almost looks like we're missing a bullet point, too, at North Fort Thomas Avenue, Covert Run Pike to Corporate Limits, like what you see in-
It's in there twice, it looks like.
Is it?
Hey, it's the end of the paragraph, and then, and then it's the next bullet.
So, yeah, I'll take one of those out.
And then actually, that, Fort Thomas Avenue isn't Route eleven twenty at that point at Covert Run, anyway.
Now, we have, since then, we have put in the sidewalk from Covert Run to-
Right.
So, we could probably eliminate that. Both of those, not just the one.
Under T three three, which is the, which talks about the bike-friendly city, at the end of that, it just says, "Establish public and private partnership to establish bicycle rentals at strategic locations throughout the city." I guess I don't have a problem with that, but is that something also that council wants to fund and implement as a bike rental?
Yeah, it likely not. I know there's been some discussions about it. I'm not sure on that level, but, you know, internally, we've had some, and they, they were appearing in the city at one point, and we weren't really promoting them in, in the city, so I'm not sure if there was a formal-
You talking about the scooters or you talking about bicycles?
Actually, I, I don't know if they were a combination, a bicycle and/or scooters or both. I, I guess in my mind, they're one and the same, as far as the rental ones. And I know that it's been a couple of years, but they kind of started appearing in the city, and I'll be honest, I'm not sure that wasn't under my purview, if it was P D or council that took some action on that, or if it kind of just went away on its own. But yeah, I think that that's something that, you know, we can let council weigh in on, or I can talk to the rest of the administration and see if there was a formal decision made, then, then we can maybe eliminate it.
One of the other comments I had written down with regards to T three point three point two, we're talking about marking bicycle routes. If we're going to eliminate the bike-friendly city status, I think might bear mentioning that we're marking our paths in accordance with like, established K Y T C standards or something else, so that, like, there's some consistency to it somewhere. Like a consistency and also like a good precedent.
Yeah, I think the ones where we would start on, or where we have started on, as far as the sharers, I did have to get, you know, permission from the state to install those, and we certainly did meet, you know, their regulations for the sharers along north and south Fort Thomas Avenue. And honestly, that's probably where we would continue, continue our initial efforts. I guess with this context, do we want to modify that top point? Jerry, can you go up a little bit? Back up. T three point three, this was part of the discussion last week. We were just looking at the headings. Do we want to keep this in there and modify that now that we see a little bit more of the context?
I mean, I'm okay with you add something just to, something along the lines of improving and accommodating bicycle, bicyclists, bicycle travel throughout the city or something like that, something along those lines. As a goal, I mean, I don't, I think that's a goal of the city.
Yeah.
Okay. Under T three five, there, there was that bullet about improving the efficiency of Grand and Highland. I mentioned to you, you know, that, I think the last meeting, there was a project in the, the K Y T C six-year plan to construct a new roundabout there at that intersection. I still don't know if that's something real or not.
I mean, it's, it's real. It's just, I, I don't know where we stand on it. I know that there's been some discussions. It's kind of out of my purview. I think that's ultimately, I, I know Matt's had some discussions, but other than that, I don't really know. But yeah, that might be something that's better suited for, for council on that one.
I mean, I don't know what is the specific efficiency, you know, intersection capacity problem is exactly.
You don't have a problem with them improving it?
I don't have a problem with improving it. I just don't know what the problem specifically is, I guess.
Yeah, I'm not sure if there is a problem, or if it was more of an aesthetic, you know, desire from an aesthetic standpoint. You know? Yeah, I, once again, I don't know if there was a desire from an aesthetic standpoint or something else. I mean, I, I don't-
Well, it says efficiency, so that's why I-
Well, right, it does, but I don't know if that, the wordsmithing there was done in a certain way or not.
So, if they're not going to do a roundabout, the pavement sensors at least need to work, because I can't tell you how many times I've sat there at that light for absolutely no reason, and it doesn't matter what time it is.
At Highland and Grand?
Yes.
Huh. I've never had the problem there.
The efficiency problem, right there.
Yeah, I mean, it drives me nuts.
Signal timing needs to be reviewed in the-
If I had to pick one light in the city that drives me crazy, it's that one.
Interesting. I mean, we can reach out to the state on that. I know that they have begun, and I'm not sure if they're complete with that particular intersection. They, they changed out some of the intersections to motion sensors versus the sensors in the, in the asphalt or concrete.
Yeah, they're moving to radar detection.
So, the biggest one that we always had complaints about was the one at the bottom of Grand View and where it intersects with Alexander Pike. That was the one that we always got questions about, and I think that one's been modified. But I, you're the first person I've heard about.
I can't tell you. My kids even tried to cut through that lot that's for sale now.
From which side? Is, is it from the-
You're coming up and hanging a left on Highland.
Oh, okay, I see. So, you're coming from-
Like Newport.
Newport, okay.
It won't recognize your cars there half the time.
The police don't seem to police that, so if you, uh-
Yeah.
Should've been a high school junior coming back from Roy Rogers, trying to get back to school. Really a problem there. Sharon, I was going to say, I know you. Somebody lift a weight?
That's what I was wondering.
Dropping barbells, dumbbells?
Too heavy for me.
The, there was a, so under L four one one, it just says, "Work with state to reclassify Mary Ingalls, reduce the speed to a park-like feel." Again, that's been re-designated already. I, I think that you could take that out, I would think. And then there was a section below that about develop new pedestrian cycling paths and trails on Mary Ingalls Highway. Then it lists a whole connection of up, going up the hill for those. I, I mean, I don't think that's a bad idea as far as a goal. I don't know if we specifically wanted to get in the exact locations of where those connections were going to be. And then the one that's at Lincoln Road and North Fort Thomas isn't technically in Fort Thomas, part of it, anyway. And it's not eleven twenty, but I, I thought that, you know, you, down below, it talks about Riverfront Commons and the parks and open space. You could maybe just put a bullet in there about, you know, providing connectivity to the future Riverfront Commons if it's implemented, something along those lines. I just thought it was pretty specific for a goal. Does anybody else have any? And then the T four one five, it says, "Create a water trail for kayaking, canoeing." Again, I, that's not really in our purview, but I don't know if council has thoughts about canoe access or kayak access.
We've actually got one. Down to the north of Tower Hill Road, we created a small parking area off to, on the riverside. It's relatively flat and easy access. We haven't really been significantly promoting it at this point. We're just trying to feel it out at this point. If I'm not mistaken, I think we, like I said, just put a few more, a gravel lot there for parking access, but we've, we've heard that there is a few kayakers that go down. It's, it's easy, walkable to get down to the river there. So, that might be something that we, you know, promote more, but we're just kind of feeling it out right now. So, yeah.
I remember that we had some discussion about like, the, the barge operations of the icebreakers down there. Did we ever find out who actually owns the icebreakers?
Not, not to my knowledge. I, I don't know. Maybe we did, but I'm not, I don't know.
Because the corps would have to permit the kayak access, so I wasn't sure, you know, how much coordination's going on with them.
I don't think there's been a whole bunch of permitting on that kayak.
I think that's just it. I think that's why we haven't promoted it. I think it's just one of those-
I mean, I'm not saying it's a bad idea, I just, but if you have barge operations in there, they just need to be aware of it, because they would put it on the navigation chart.
Okay.
Saying that there's a, you know, an access point there, and it's restricted, you don't have people going down there with their two hundred and thirty, you know, horsepower ski boats or anything either.
Right.
Chairman, my wife had a fall a month ago, and it's basically non-ambulatory.
Okay.
So, I told her I would not be more than an hour and a half.
Thanks, Jerry.
We still have a quorum, if you'd like to continue, or if you feel-
We're, we're, we're in the home stretch.
I know. I was hoping we'd make it.
We're not going to vote on anything regardless. We're just- Well, we can, I mean, I'm-
It's up, it's up to the, and that's up, I mean, the, the planning commission meetings back in the day, from what I understand, used to go to one o'clock and everything else, so I, we, we haven't kind of gone on that path, path, so it's up to you all, what your comfort level is with what we have.
Okay to keep going for a little bit more, or?
Yeah. You know, we're not on a time constraint. You know, at this point, we're into the comprehensive plan, so, you know, once again, I think it's, it's up to you and what you-
Yeah, I think we've gotten to the bulk of what I had, really. I mean, we, we should, honestly, we should be wrapped up in about twenty minutes, I'd say.
No, it's not going to be more. No, 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 no.
You want to take a break, Kevin, and let them ask you a question?
That's fine. We can certainly do that.
We can take a break, and if you all want to, if you have any comments or questions, we can do that now, and then, depending on timing, we can revisit the rest. I, I think we only got, honestly, about fifteen, twenty minutes left. Well, the whole, the, the back section on the focus area plans, we weren't going to get into, I don't think, tonight. We were just going to go through parks and open space, utilities. So, we're just going like, two or, two or three more pages.
We should either continue on or, or, you know, adjourn and take it up next time, so that the, the comments can all be when we complete. I don't, I mean, if, if we take comments now on stuff that we haven't talked about, I don't think that's-
Well, let's, let's just try to wrap up, like I said, something about fifteen, twenty minutes, and then we'll, we'll entertain any questions. Uh, let's see. Yeah, so I, I guess I was on chapter two point, or section two point three.
Yeah, I think that's where we ended up.
Yeah. And the only thing I had in there was, there was, it breaks out the regional trail network, the local trail network, and the site trail network, and I wasn't sure what the Alexandria, again, the Alexandria shared use path, that's why I put a question mark, because I wasn't sure what the status of that was, or the Memorial Parkway Scenic Corridor. Are we planning a trail along Memorial Parkway?
I'm not aware of anything. You know, maybe there is some, there was some discussion with Tri-State Trails as far as some element to-
I mean, I think this was in eighteen, so this would've been before Tri-State Trails.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I'm, I'll be honest, I, there's nothing that I've been involved in associated with that.
So, like I said, if there's nothing there, we probably shouldn't reference those. And then there was also this Rossford Park pedestrian connection. I wasn't sure what that was. I, I know at one time, there was discussion about the trail that kind of goes behind St. Catherine's down the hill to Rossford, but I, I thought that that kind of dropped, because it was mostly on private property.
Yeah, I don't know. There might, there's, could be a connector to like, the backside of gunpowder, but, but that's also through private property. I'm not sure, it's not something that we've really pursued or pushed, or, or anyone's come before us.
Yeah, so that was where the, and then the last one went on there was the, you know, the walkways around the, the reservoir, and I know that, that's been a topic since nine eleven.
Right.
It's come and gone. We have still talked about it. Right, so I, I didn't know if that was something we need to keep in there.
I, I would recommend keeping that, just because I know that's, it's been discussed, unless the council decides to remove it, because they've already said no, but we were actually working with the water district. It's, logistically, it's pretty difficult, because they use those, the trail that was around the reservoirs, they use that for vehicular traffic pretty heavy, and they don't want to discontinue that, and they also don't want pedestrians on there that they have to dodge and avoid. So, it would be creating a new trail through there, and it would, it, it was pretty pricey, and I think for that reason, it just temporarily, at least temporarily on the back burner, maybe permanently for that matter. But yeah, maybe we could put that as a council.
And this is the, this is the one up at Tower Park, across from Tower Park, not the Memorial Parkway.
Correct.
And then, again, the, so that P two one, it talks again about the Mayfield and James Avenue stuff that I already mentioned. And then P three down there, when, I think we talked about this at one of our past couple meetings, it just says, "Invest in Tower Park as a regional destination." Again, there was some debate about how much of a regional destination you want to promote Tower Park to be, and the investments council wants to put into that. Again, that's not really part of our purview. And then it has a little bullet list of specific, you know, improvements to Tower Park, like the pickleball, the bike park, the zip lines, all that stuff. I don't know if we want to include that, or update it, or revise it, or whatever, but that's, again, not our, not our purview.
I think, I think they're just probably listing out projects so that they can score better on their grants, is my guess.
Right, but this, this was seven years ago.
We just need to make sure the list is still current.
Right, that's what I mean.
Yeah. I don't, I agree. I don't know that the list is really current anymore.
Are they making pickleball courts instead of tennis ball?
Well, it's similarly to what it was before. The pickleball will be striped on the lower two courts in addition to tennis, so there'll be both.
And the splash pad's gone, right? That's what I've heard.
The, the large splash pad is, I mean, there's, not that we, they, they did take the splash pad out of the Tower Park Playground project. There was some discussions, but no action whatsoever, that do we consider creating smaller little splash pads throughout the park? You know, maybe the, just to get a respite in the middle of the summer, not even a full-blown splash pad, but, but more of a small little-
Spray or thing.
Water feature, yeah, of some sort that, that might.
Then the next page under- Uh, then the next page under P four one, it just has a, a section there about Sargent Park and the Riverfront Park. And you just talked about the Riverfront Park. I, I'm okay with leaving them as they are. I just think they probably need to be updated with the current status of what those are. And then under two four was the utilities and facilities. There was a thing about upgrading the city building, obviously, at least for the most part accomplished.
Yeah.
So just update that stuff. You know, same way down there about some of that earlier discussion about the VA hospitals, the continued dialogue with the National Guard about acquisition of the Staples Building. It's not technically the National Guard, but. So just update the status on all those things. Under U one two two, where it says provide incentives to property owners to reduce energy consumption. I don't know what kind of incentives we were thinking at the time. Yeah, I'm not sure on that one.
I mean, you could say you're exploring the opportunity for incentives, but I don't really know what the incentives would be at this point.
And. Send an incentive to his solar panels or something?
I don't know. Um, and then, um, there was, and then under that U one two four is also that same discussion about the reservoir walking paths. I guess at the very bottom of that page, under that U one three four, which is consider amendments to the zoning code to require additional site design review beyond the stormwater requirements of SD one. I don't think we require anything beyond the requirements of SD one in our UDO, I don't think. But in, in any case, I would just reference the UDO. And then on that, there's that repeated thing about the low impact development tax abatement incentives from council. Again, that's for council. Under the U two two, where it talks about ensure that fiber infrastructure supports economic development education, I would just change that to wireless and fiber because technology's kind of evolved since that. I'd just say instead of view fiber optics, it'd just say put communications infrastructure. And then at the very bottom down there was about the, talks about the Riverfront Commons and property acquisition along the riverfront and the green belt and work with CSX and all the property owners down there. And I'm okay with it, but I guess that's, again, that's kind of what council wants to do there.
Okay.
And I think that's it.
Yeah.
The rest of it. I said the focus area plans, I still think that really that should be kind of kept separate from the comp plan moving forward.
Maybe identify that we have focus areas, but maybe then.
Maybe, maybe they should be updated as necessary, but not to actually do focus area plans as part of the comp plan. Not adopt focus area plans as part of the comp plan.
They could be their own sub-area plan or.
Right.
Corridor plan or whatever.
I mean, are you, so are you saying eliminate this or just?
I, I would say the, yeah, that we wouldn't have the specifics that are listed out for all these areas. I would just say to review and revisit those in the future.
Okay.
As a goal and not to actually do a James Court, Mayfield Avenue, sub-area plan and a, you know. I mean, unless council feels that they really want to do that, then I'm, I'm not going to argue against it. It just, to me, that's where a lot of the controversy and a lot of the, you know, a lot of the things that maybe have changed since 2018 are those focus area plans, which really aren't necessary in a comprehensive plan.
They're really a different plan at that point.
Right.
I mean, I guess would this be eliminating and putting in another document?
Um, well, I think you could just recommend that the focus area plans that were in the vision plan be updated and addressed to reflect current priorities of the city and just leave that in there as a recommendation, but not, not get into the specifics of, you know, the actual, on Mont Bel Court, look at the parking behind the building kind of, you know, not to that level of detail. Because a comprehensive plan isn't really intended to get to that level of detail.
Yeah, I don't know that I've ever seen a comprehensive plan put like a sub-area or focus area or.
In the comp plan.
In the comp plan.
Right.
Other than acknowledge that this is an area we want to look at.
Right.
Well, and I think that, that being said, you obviously see that, you know, based on just the title, it is a community plan. This obviously far exceeds what a typical comprehensive plan is. And I think that's probably why some of the stuff was in there that is technically outside of our purview, um, but was kind of part of that entire process and something they wanted to build upon. So, yeah, I think we can, you know, I'll, I'll look at that and see how we need to handle that internally from a, you know, legal standpoint, KRS and things of that nature.
Yeah, because KRS doesn't address that period.
Well, right. But I guess, you know, what should we do to make sure that we're, you know, fulfilling what we need to fulfill from a planning commission standpoint slash KRS standpoint?
Even with this, even without all that, we're well beyond what we're required to do.
Well, you're right. Absolutely. A lot of the stuff of we've, as you've commented, um, so, yeah, let me, you know, we'll look into that, talk to Tim and Dion.
I think there's still usable information. It's just maybe a matter of determining if we want to have these areas as a sub-area or corridor plan or whatever and maybe separate those out and for, especially if it's a contingents area, maybe have a planning process specific for that.
Yeah.
At that point.
Didn't we just go through all this at the UDO?
Not, well, we did in terms of the zoning.
We did for the zoning because some of it.
But not necessarily the design elements of, you know.
Well, some of it we did.
Some of it we did.
Yeah. We, I mean, reading some of them, some of it we did too, was included in it. Setbacks, encourage the upper stories for offices and housing. We, we went over a lot of that, you know. Yeah. But in, in details.
But that's not usually part of the comprehensive plan, that is what I'm saying.
I know. That's why I'm saying that maybe this shouldn't be in here because we already went over that and that.
Maybe we all, maybe we all agree that it shouldn't be in there.
Exactly. Because we.
I know, I'm, I'm in favor of removing it.
We went over most of this in that, in the plan that we just did.
Want to take public comment?
Yeah, I, if, if you all still have any comments or questions, are we, are we done with our discussion?
Yeah.
I think so.
Yeah.
Yeah. If, if you wouldn't mind coming up to the microphone.
Oh, gosh.
We're putting a spotlight on you. Excuse me.
Okay. Tiffany Huber, 26 Hawthorne Avenue. I just had a few requests. On L one two, under quality of life land use, it talks about a vibrant business district. I really think it should say harmonious because we need business districts that actually foster social indicators and a sense of community, something that's going to go with our community, not just get something that's wild and crazy. And anyways, I looked up the definition and harmonious was a much better definition, I thought. So that would be one suggestion for there. I think the other word accommodate. We're not going to be able to accommodate everything that's in the plan. So I think it would be better to say evaluate instead of accommodate. Accommodate implies that we're going to make that happen for you.
Is that throughout or just, was there a specific section?
It was throughout. Uh, and I think, and, and I think Dave maybe changed it to accommodate. I'm so sorry.
Well, it was encourage and then we changed it to accommodate.
Yeah. I was thinking evaluate. And then, I think I only had one more thing. I'm sorry. Give me one second. We covered a lot. Did we keep in city in a park?
That, I don't think that was part of this, I don't think.
Okay. Cause I know that was discussed last time, but that was something that I thought we should keep in. And I think it's because the goal of the majority of residents is to preserve the green space, replace the green space and add green space barriers when we have some of these types of developments that we've talked about in the past. So, um, that's a lot of what that means too. And then, um, I do agree with what Pam said, that a lot of the stuff has been remedied, if you will, as part of the UDO, especially some of those focus areas that we just talked about. And, and I know several of you commented on something similar to that in some other places. I think that's, that's all that I had.
I just have a few comments as well and they'll all be brief. First of all, Dave, I really appreciate how you led a lot of the discussion. You were so well-prepared and I'm, I'm grateful. I appreciate it. Thank you. Cause I don't know how long you had this document. Talking about the Carlisle property, my understanding is it's, and I think, I'm sorry Jerry left because I would have liked him to be shaking his head yes. It's a not buildable land. They are saying they're trying to stabilize it. They're still dumping stuff there. Some company is still dumping stuff. So I don't know how we're going to stabilize it and do drainage if they're still dumping. It's been so much discussion at city council about it and it's pretty much sadly, because it's a beautiful location, but it's not very valuable, very useful. Parking plan, in talking about the parking, there was a comment made that it's not that they'll be leveling a place to do a, a flat parking lot, but one of the meetings, I wish I knew the date because it still hurts my soul when someone on the commission said, talking about Midway Court, we can just wait till those people all die and buy their property as they do and we, we don't have to abide by any planning and zoning. We can level it and have a parking lot. That still hurts my soul to think that that's a goal was to just wait people out until they pass away. Another question I have, maybe you can answer this, Kevin. I believe it was you who said it. Talking about the signage, that a person, that we recently lost an employee who was vital to the signage discussion, who was that?
Sam Shelton. He was working, he, he did a lot of, he, he, he did a lot of legwork for us.
Okay. Thank you.
And then just to comment on your dumping, they're not dumping there, just to reassure you. Uh, we do have a couple contractors that are working in the city, namely a contractor on Main and, Main Avenue, they're, it's for SD one. They're replacing a sewer lane and there's really no area to station materials. So they've been stationed some materials on that site temporarily. And then there's also a water main that was being replaced on Grand Avenue. That contractor had limited area to put materials to station for the project. So they're stationing them down there temporarily.
And then they'll go away?
They'll go away. So those will be cleaned up and gone, but since they're doing improvements in our city, we weren't doing anything at the moment with it. We allowed them to, to station materials there is primarily what it was.
That makes great sense.
Yeah.
Um, another thing, they mentioned the conservation zone. If I'm not mistaken, during the early sections when we were all getting our maps with, you know, A one, you know, R, R one A, R one B, all those, there was actually one designated as conservation zone on River Road, like behind the Tower Park, that was like unbillable, unusable. Am I correct on that, Sharon?
Yeah. I thought there was.
And it was called conservation zone. I mean, that was what the zoning was.
Off the top, I don't have a map in front of me and off the top of my head. I know that the, the one that sticks in my brain is off of Waterworks Road, there's an apartment complex. I think it was called Royal Cove. I'm not sure if it's still called Royal Cove. Right off Memorial to Waterworks, that site, the back part of that site is conservation zone. That's the only one in my head, but I could be wrong. I don't remember.
And I can't swear because I don't have it in front of me either, but that's my recollection. Another mentioning crosswalk, crosswalks, it seems as if any of the discussion, which was very short, was like to add, like maybe put school zones or something similar or somewhat limited. I, I will never, ever condone Facebook driving any discussion, but there is a ton of comments about the crosswalks and people not abiding by them and they're not stopping, they're almost getting hit. And in conjunction with that, bikes in the city, they are referring those to, um, a lot of meetings at city council about that, to the scooters as well. Law Labor and License is currently working on fine tuning or very strictly, well, some, some of it's getting more liberal than, less restrictive than it had been. Rules on where you can ride your scooter, can you ride to a scooter, walk your wheels, got to cross over and, you know, a lot of discussion on it. So I think crosswads, crosswalks are probably a little bit more of a discussion worthy than what, you know, what we had here tonight. Two more little things, well, maybe two and a half. Talking about the roundabout at Highland and Grand, I've heard this for several years and I talked with a couple of city council members. I said, is this really a discussion? I understand about the, not, the light not trickling. You're going up Highland, you should be going Grand and going down Highland. I, I can wait three lights at the, you know, at the gas station. I buy my gas at that BP all the time. If they would ever say, don't cut through there, I, I'd keep my receipts and say, this is my gas station. I'll just get a little more gas. But anyway, it's, um, a roundabout with this, the council, the two people on council with whom I spoke, said we would have to buy all four of those properties, which Urpenbeck's property is for sale. I know it's over a million. I don't know how much over. And if you buy the bank and you buy the, um, little pocket park there, which is just a sitting park and the BP, it, I mean, it's just economically not feasible. I can't picture, plus, I don't, I don't think that they need it. I think they need to fix that light. I don't have a problem with that. But other than that, I don't know. I am not a fan of roundabouts. If you've ever gone to Carmel, Indiana, it's the, the roundabout capital of the world. They sell T-shirts there. I mean, I, I, if I go there with my friend, I say, you gotta drive because I'm not driving through this town. But my, my other comment.
Newport. They're in Newport.
Oh, they're not fun.
I know.
I even, I even came up with the suggestion, I would keep Urpenbeck open. It's just an auto body place. And then all the people who just lift small fender benders in the roundabout and just pull right on into Urpenbeck and get their repairs done. I thought it, that was the only way I would do this. And you also, if you put a roundabout there, kids can't cross the street. Like if you, if you live on one of the streets, like, you know, by the library and you want to ride your bike to, with more, you can't do it. You know, they don't, you don't have a light in the roundabout to say now the kids can cross. So I, if it ever comes to fruition, boy, I don't know how they're going to tap dance to do that. And thanks for laughing at my little joke about the auto body repair shop. My other question is an easy one and this is probably to you, Tim. If we have that kayak launching on the river and we pave it, have parking, does the city have any liability with that?
With regard to?
The people who use our access point to get onto the river to kayak?
Only from the standpoint of making sure that the access point is appropriate and is not in disrepair in some way. There, there's no doubt in my mind that people enter into the river and kayaking and something happens then while they're on the river, we're not liable for that.
They'd only be, okay, I'm, I'm glad to hear that. And it seems as if there's one other one. Oh, yeah. Just kind of to Dan's point, so many times, the discussion was, well, that's not in our purview. And I agree with you. So what I'm curious about is shouldn't yours, your whole section on this comprehensive plan just be land use?
It primarily is, although. It primarily is under the Kentucky revised statute. It primarily is, under the Kentucky revised statute, there is an element of community, facilities, utilities, transportation, so some of those topics are, besides just land use, are included in the comp plan.
It just felt so many times, and I, I agreed with you completely, it's like, this isn't us.
A lot of the programs, incentives, pursuing funding, all those kinds of things that, that really are done at the council level, are, are council pri, or city priorities, they're not necessarily under the, the oversight of the planning commission.
So I guess maybe my, if I were on council, I wouldn't want planning to be-
Right, and that's why I-
Setting the goals and objectives that, that you all have nothing to do with.
Right.
And-
And, you know, Andy asked that question about how did these originate, and I just wanted to clarify so they understand that some of those were, you know, like Kevin said, they came from the 2018 plan, they didn't necessarily originate with the planning commission directly, so.
So I guess maybe I'm curious, and this was a debate, not a debate, it's just a short discussion at council the other night, Monday night, that the, the planning commission seems to be doing all of the goals and objectives, and one person said, I thought that they had to, but someone checked K R S and said, you don't have to guide the entire planning and zoning, I mean, community plan, comprehensive plan.
Ultimately, we recommended to council, and then they adopted.
I realize that, but the-
The goals and objectives can come from outside of-
My point.
Right, but ultimately, council's the one that decides.
No, I understand that, 100% understand that, but as far as your group tackling the, the goals and objections for every area of the comprehensive plan, I don't think that's fair to y'all, and I don't know that it's fair to those who, well, heck, I'm on this, now guess what I have to do, you know, so, my comment, I'm sympathetic to the time that you, that you take, and I know a lot of it isn't easy, but I don't like when people say stay in your lane, and I'm not telling you to, because you're doing just what you were told to do, but I would focus on planning, on the planning and zoning part of the, or the land use part of the comp plan, that's me, I have no power to dictate, but I think it's only fair. Thank you.
Hi, thanks for being here so long. I'll be very quick, especially because I don't have any direct questions for you, just kind of comments, things I've been worried about, mostly, if not all, holdovers from the last comp plan 2018, which I felt weren't very well addressed. The most important is public input, I'm really concerned about how that's going to happen. We were reassured at the last city council meeting that there'll be ample time for that, but perhaps I missed it, but I didn't hear anything real specific about that. So I would just like to say that I would like to see that fully addressed, and to make sure that there is adequate public input, not just a couple of meetings where people can stick, sticky notes on a board. I don't like to talk too much, a general philosophy of my life about things I don't know about, or know very, very little about, having a master's degree in nursing and taking grad-level statistics, one of my focuses was research, so I do know about a good survey, it's something that you learn ad nauseam, and in my, I believe informed opinion, the public input, quote, survey, I've heard it called survey, done for the last comp plan, Murphy and my student, because I also was a professor at San Jose State University College of Nursing, I would have failed you, that was not an adequate survey to really get the tenor of what the public wanted, so I, and I don't know what the planning commission's part, how you incorporate that into your questions and analysis tonight, where does that come in? I'd like to see that really fully examined.
Only if I could, I, I know Matt has-
Sure, Tim.
He's talked about it, he's-
Right.
Communications, I know Tiffany has talked with him, Sharon sent him some recommendations today, and-
What happened to that? Yeah.
That's still being worked on, considered, I would suggest you reach out to Matt.
Okay, I mean, you know, there's so many different ways, even Survey Monkey, although that's, that's not great, because that limits your population that's going to respond to whoever has a computer and knows about it, again, there's all kinds of ways to do a really thorough survey, and that's what I would like to see, and that leads me to just the last thing that I wanted to talk about, because I live in the park, I loved Tower Park very much before I bought a home there. I vehemently disagree with a concept, where is it here, investates P three from under two point three, and I quote, invest in Tower Park as a recreational destination. As I said, vehemently disagree with that personally, and I have never talked to anyone that frequents Tower Park, and I guess in the eight and a half years I've lived there, thousands of people, most people, and again, I would like to see this come up in the survey, want to see it preserved as a green space, nature, and then the concept of the history, not only of Fort Thomas itself, the area, but the military aspects of it, not a recreation destination. If someone said to me a couple of months ago, it's not Keynes Island, it's not Bollywood, we don't need a zip line and ropes course there. Anyway, so I would like to see that go to the public, I believe in democracy, if the majority of people say, no, I, we want it to be a recreation destination, well, then so shall it be, because I believe in democracy, but I don't think so, so I would like to make sure that aspect gets into the, into the survey. There's lots of stuff all through this, and it came out tonight, I don't know if you guys were aware of it, it's written in different aspects that you all went over, such as expand the medium and event space at mess hall, I don't see how you could expand it anymore there. I encourage you to Google the mess hall, and then look at that, what it looked like five years ago. It's kind of sad, in my opinion, it's certainly not very green anymore, and the whole side between the mess hall and the ball field is now just a parking lot. So I think it's developed enough, I like the kids' area, I know some people think it's a little too much, I like it, I think it's nice. On Pearson Street, we're really tired of cleaning up the poopy diapers and all of the garbage, there was one yesterday, and that's not the fault of the city, I bring that up only as an example that it's developed enough, and most of the people who are coming there aren't spending money in the city, not the majority. So that's it, the main focus is please, maybe hire somebody that's competent to do a, a survey or consult with you all on doing it, but make sure that you really are hearing what the residents have to say, particularly about Tower Park, thank you.
Melanie, can I also just add on the survey, did the survey before, we heard the other night, after it's all said and done, they'll do a survey?
Right, that's why I said I'm confused about how things can be discussed, it's got to put the cart before the horse, right? Can't we ask the citizens who are paying taxes what they want, not at the end? Thanks.
Anybody else?
Thank you.
I move to adjourn.
Moving as second to adjourn, the meeting is adjourned.